Madam City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Damian. City Clerk Garcia will join us at the seven o'clock and I will conduct roll call. Mayor Protem Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Avila, Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
For the record, Mayor Estrada and Councilmember Hernandez, I believe, are running late.
Thank you, Lulu. Madam City Clerk. All right, we're going to go to public communication. Do we have any public communications?
None listed, Mayor Protem.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak that did not fill out a card?
I don't see anyone approaching the podium.
Thank you. Seeing none, I will close public communications. We will move to open session, study session. The Caesar Chavez Foundation presentation presented by Ron Garcia, Director of Community Development, and Caesar Toledo Project Manager. Go ahead, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, council staff. Back in November of 2021, the Caesar Foundation conducted a presentation before the council, presenting their proposed fifty-plus unit, one-hundred percent affordable housing project located on Downing and Ramona. At that point of introducing that project, the council made some recommendations on the architecture and some site design recommendations. So since November, the Caesar Chavez team has been working diligently with staff and also with LA County Fire Department in addressing some of the site design changes. So before you, I would like to reintroduce the Caesar Chavez team again, Caesar Toledo, and the architects, Onyx Architects, on presenting the revised plan. At the conclusion of this revised plan, we're at the culmination of approving this project. Because this project is one-hundred percent affordable and is within a high transit priority area, per state law, this project cannot be deemed discretionary, meaning that the planning commission or city council can, would not have that discretion of approving this project, therefore would have to be approved administratively. We have done that with the Retirement Housing Foundation Mixed Use Project that is located across the street from the MetroLink Station. So this will be the second project that would be approved under that state law. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and introduce Caesar Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. My name is Stephen Hernandez. I'm with the Caesar Chavez Foundation. I'm the Director of Business Development. And first, I'd like to thank Ron and his staff in working diligently with us and going through all the comments that were heard and the reflections of city council and staff of their comments from other prior projects to make sure we're set up for success and really capturing what the development has and what the community wanted overall. So good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and CEO. Thank you for having us here today. We're going to just go through the quick presentation on the background of the foundation. Next slide, please. And then we're going to go on what the target residence, just to kind of get a reminder of what tenants we're going to be serving as future residents of Baldwin Park. And then we're going to go through the site plan update of the different changes that we had from November all the way to where we are now today from working with Mr. Garcia and the rest of the staff. So go on to the next slide. So just a little bit about the Caesar Chavez Foundation. We were founded by Cesar E. Chavez, the labor civil rights leader. Started the foundation as a second pillar of, from the Union, of United Farm Workers Union, to set up some social enterprises to enhance the capabilities of Latinos and working families, not only farmworkers, but all at large around the Southwest and California, Arizona, New Mexico, and Texas. The department I work for is the Housing and Economic Development Fund, and where we have about five thousand units across the Southwest catered mainly towards low-income families. And we do have some projects that are veteran-focused and some projects that we got online that are survivors of domestic violence, but with the real family focus for low-income families. So that's who the foundation is. Now, just kind of reiterate that from last time. I went into detail last time, but this is who we work for under the oversight and of our president, Paul Chavez, who was Caesar Chavez's son. Next slide. For the future residents, just overall from the census, the average annual household income of Baldwin Park is about eighty-one thousand. The median income is about sixty-eight thousand dollars a unit. So, and the average household size for Baldwin Park is about four, 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 four people per family. So if you look at that, if you look at the income of who our future residents are going to serve, the affordable, when we say affordable, we mean working families that make between thirty to sixty percent of the area median income. So for a family, for one person, the one-hundred percent average income for LA County in general is about eighty-three thousand. But we'll be serving, future residents are going to be making between twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollars a year for a single person. But for a family of four, which is the target population of a family here in Baldwin Park, the one-hundred percent average income is about one-hundred and nineteen thousand. But our target population for our family, for our residents, will be thirty-five thousand to seventy-one thousand dollars a year. So as you can see, they're just right there in that big span, which is the biggest need. I think the, from the census, about forty-two percent of the residents in Baldwin Park are renters. And of that, they're paying about fifteen hundred, one thousand five hundred dollars in rent, and most of them are over, are paying over their income for rent overall in the community here. So if you go into the rents, how much are going to be charging? You know, everyone always asks that. So we're going to have a reflection of one to four bedrooms in this development, which is a change from the last time. Last time, we had one, twos, and threes. The four bedrooms, we put in there because of the higher family population in the general area, and also makes us competitive for some federal and state funding. So that's why we have about ten percent for four bedrooms as well. But for a one-bedroom, it could rent from six hundred and seventy dollars to one thousand three hundred and forty, going all the way to our four bedrooms, which is a thousand dollars, to about two thousand dollars per month is what we're going to target our rent bracket. And that's going to go through from ones, twos, threes, and four bedrooms. So what we did as a reflection, as we moved on to the design, we took the comments from November of last year. We worked again with staff to present what we have today. The biggest changes we have are from the height. I know we, originally, we had, we proposed a four-story development. Now, we went down to three stories, because I know that was, the height was a big consideration, specifically with the specific plan that was getting introduced. And then we moved from fifty-seven units to fifty-one units, because we targeted a larger bedroom with the four bedrooms in there. So we had to reduce our units because of those larger units that we are templated in our development. But the, and then the other big changes were, we had green building principles in order to have a more efficient building or design, and then also given the energy crisis and all that coming on to play, and renewable energy, we did the green building initiatives. And then a transit-oriented design, because we're so close to the metro and then the rail and high-speed transit, and there were Ramona with the, with the train, I mean, with the train and the bus, it makes us a transit-oriented design with, have that all, everything centralized and localized to get our residents near jobs in the easiest means and also a more efficient mean of public transportation instead of using vehicles is the key. And that's why we, using those transit-oriented design principles. But also, the biggest thing also that ties it, we could design the best project, but it really comes down to funding. So we, because we're poshered, we made these design changes. It makes us very, very highly likely to be awarded county, state, and federal funding. But not only that we have something designed, but also meets their requirements to posture us to be a higher, high-leveraged development for those funding sources, so that we could get this project completed and have future residents serving, or have this development serve the future residents and residents that are here in Baldwin Park to save money, so they're not paying over thirty, forty percent of their income on rent to live in our development here. And we could work with Ron and his team to, or we could strategically market the development, so that, you know, Baldwin Park kind of has the first priority of that, without violating fair housing. We could work strategically and strategically market it, as we could call it, to make sure that we stay in line on that, so the county, I mean, the residents of Baldwin Park have a first shot. So I'm going to hand it over to Daniel from Onyx, and he's going to go over the design, all the different changes to design. And then if you have any questions, we'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. My name is Daniel Sanchez with Onyx Architects. Go to the next slide, please. This is our current, this is the site plan that we showed back in November after working with LA County Fire. One of the things they had asked for was a fire lane access buildings at the rear of the site, so that's located on the east side, I'm sorry, the west side of the site. Next slide. This is where we started, just as a quick reminder. It was a few years ago. Next slide. This is our current site plan. What you see in pink are highlighted community gathering spaces. We are providing rooftop deck on the corner overlooking the rail line. There's a children's play area, a community garden, it's also a learning space for the children, intermediate gathering spaces, and also a barbecue area at the north end, the courtyard. Courtyard is L-shaped, has a skinnier portion that goes east to west at the top. Slide. This is just a quick parking garage layout, showing the subterranean parking. Providing tree wells that go down to natural soil to provide full height trees in the courtyard. Next slide. First floor plan, again, in pink are the community support spaces. We'll see in elevations and renderings, we actually relocated the main entry point in lobby. It was off, kind of on the corner before. We centered it aligned with the courtyard, which we felt created a nicer transition connecting public to the community space and the garden beyond. And in that community space, we have leasing office, we have support offices, and then a community multipurpose room. There's a couple of the floor plans. Again, what you see in pink is a community space, so there's a residence lounge on the second floor. And the blue units are just identifying where our handicap accessible and units are located to meet our funding requirements for the project. And essentially, they want them scattered throughout the building. Slide. This is the third floor plan, and as I mentioned, there on the corner is the rooftop deck. Slide. So on the left is the version we showed a year ago, November. To the right is where we are today. Couple of the design recommendations and considerations that we were given. First one was to provide more articulation of the building massing of the elevations. And you pull back the balconies along Ramona. Next slide. And so this is a good representation of some of those adjustments that were made. We made an adjustment to the building materials as well to provide more variation in the building articulation, massing. We are also articulating the roofline with vertical, you know, vertical projections, pushing and pulling on those mass, those forms. The balconies have been pulled back four feet inward into the building along Ramona. Project up to thirty inches, which is the maximum allowed for canopies. And as you can see, there's a strong eyebrow canopy along that commercial storefront that kind of ties that all together, where the balconies sit on top of that. Next slide. This is the corner facing the train. Again, we wanted this to be well-articulated corner, something that is inviting and welcoming as, you know, passengers on the train as they pass by this building. This is what they'll see in the city. So really looking at how that commercial space and the residential portions of the building are defined from one another. Another consideration was to include more of the brick veneer, so you can see the brick veneer along the base there, and as the power element for our stair tower to the right. Slide. This is a close-up shot of that main building entry relocated to the center, aligned with our courtyard beyond. The community spaces kind of up to the right there with the trellis roof deck. This is the side elevation, street-side elevation. Another recommendation was to provide more native landscaping. So that's also another highlight of this redesign effort. And we have a few fly-through videos to show you, just to kind of get a feel for the design and the overall. Next slide. These are, again, still images of the courtyard, the children's play area. There's the barbecue area in the courtyard. Roof deck. Just going to end here with the last rendering shot, just to show the brick veneer finish that we're looking for. And one other thing I forgot to mention earlier was, we're also introducing a shake shingle siding with the plaster to help provide some of that contrast. Slide. So yeah, this is the... This tower is our, one of our stair towers. We wanted to, and make a vertical articulated element that's a little bit different from the residential portion. This is the two-story portion of the project that's adjacent to the lower-density housing. The fire lane on the west side, right here, also our drive ramp into the subterranean garage. There's one more video of the courtyard. This is coming in from the north side of the courtyard. Little skinny portion goes east-west. Main courtyard goes north-south, and with the barbecue area. Handicap ramps provided, because this is stepping down. There's an intermediate seating area for parents to watch their children as on the playground. And just beyond there to the right is all the community space, the main entry, the residence lounge on the second floor, and then the rooftop deck up there on the third floor. Right's the community space, that connection between the courtyard and the... That's, that's it for...
Just to highlight on the community space, as we did, we tried to activate that ground floor, that commercial space, put all our community, many space leasing office, and we're going to have a CSIP Weather Learning Center, where the foundation provides after-school programs for the kids and health and wellness, financial literacy training for the residents at large. So you'll have that ongoing, and every one of our developments have a CSIP Weather Learning Center to, as we find our, a lot of our residents, the kids are either behind in English or math. So that's kind of where we have those CSIP Weather Learning Centers to help improve those after-school programs with our, another part of our fund, our foundation has the education fund, and they kind of run those service programs for the development. So if you have any questions, we're free to take any questions or comments you may have. Over.
I have some comments, Mayor Protem.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you. I like that rendering. It looks, it looks, the other one was nice, but this one looks much more welcoming. So I really like that. Thank you for making those changes. You said, how many handicap units do you have to have in a project this size?
I believe it's a minimum of ten or fifteen percent. I'd have to double-check. But I will also mention, all of our units are standardized, so they actually are all exactly the same. Though there is, they're all technically handicap accessible.
Okay, and then those courtyards, an approximate square feet, how big are they?
It's about, it's about thirty-five feet wide by seventy-five feet long.
And the playgrounds?
Minimum playground area has to be above six, six hundred square feet.
It has to be more than six hundred?
More than six hundred.
Yeah, because otherwise it would be too small.
Then, what they did, they'd project on the upper deck, we have to have a play area for the kids, twelve and under, and then a, like, call it a tween area for the thirteen to seventeen-year-old, which is going to be more on the upper deck. And they could do, like, the live chest or, or a sitting area for...
Like board games and stuff?
Yeah, board games and stuff for the upper deck.
The brown part of the building, the front part of it, where it's brown and you kind of see windows, can you bring that lie back possibly?
Go to the slide.
Where you can see the front on the top, the second floor. I think it is second, third floor. That, that part right there. What is that section right there?
Section in the second floor?
Yes.
Is residence lounge. So that would be...
And it has a view. It's all glass, a view out to the street?
Yeah, so it's, it's another community space. It's separate from the multipurpose room. Multipurpose rooms really for the...
Education.
Education. Residence lounge is really for residents only.
And the top one, too, the third floor?
Top level is the roof deck.
Roof deck. I like that. The, I don't know if you're familiar, those apartments or unhosped, I don't know what they're called, by the movie theater in West Covina? You know which ones? I don't know the name of them. They actually have an area like that, a community room that looks, that has a big window that looks out. I like, I really like that. That's very, very nice. Also, I wanted to ask you about the CSIP Weather Program that you offer there. How do you promote it so that you make sure that families are using it or where it's...
Because we promote it because it's the first, like, when you walk in, you have the, you're going to have the CSIP Weather Learning Center there, and our resident services, they do like a sensing of what the tenants, when they come in, they already know how much they make, what they, what they have, how many kids are per household for the family size. And then they let know, this is the programs that we have for after-school. And then our resident services are very active of, they need to change programs. If they make them, they say they're, they need more help on math, and they'll put more emphasis on math, and they do with reading, or they do, you got donations for 3D printing, so we're able to teach them to get the computers and how to do 3D printing. But they're very active in terms of getting a good sensing of the community first, before they say, here's a standard product that we're going to replicate. They kind of adapt it, but given the education component, they already have their curriculum already set up, but they just, they can adapt and change it, and that's what's kind of good for us.
Do you provide the tutors there already?
Yes, we have onsite social service provider that will, or resident service provider that's onsite as an office that kind of manages that education component, as it's part of our in-kind contribution for, as what we do is part of our mission.
I really like that. I really like that you're focusing on the youth and making sure that, that they're catching up on their work, because with COVID, we've noticed at the school district that a lot of children got behind. I mean, if they were behind, they're even further behind now. So I like the fact that you're incorporating the tutoring and, and everything that they need there. So I really, really like that. Thank you. It was a great presentation, and I like the changes that you've made.
And if you want to see, there's a development off of Tyler and Valley in Almani. We just completed Plaza Ortiz that, if you go off of Valley, you'll see, you can walk in and you could take a tour, look into it. Tyler and Valley, right by the, by the metro station there in Almani.
Okay, maybe we can do a filter, Ron.
You can see it. It's right there.
And it's similar to this one?
Not design-wise, but in terms of all the amenities and how we structure the amenities. Yes, very similar. And actually, Onyx built that one.
Bye, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Garcia. And then just also to let you know, Mayor Estrada's back on as well.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Yeah, so I, I'm looking at the design. Is this like a mid-century inspiration?
Really hard to say. The design inspiration's kind of shifted over time. It does have some mid-century influence. A project we saw recently, it was more of a contemporary building that used a shake shingle, typically see on, like, a master's design building, like, reinterpreting...
Ah, right.
For this, for this project, we thought, kind of makes it look a little exciting, a little bit more fun. We liked the blue color contrasting with warmer brick veneer. And also bringing in the whole notion and language of old train stations, so the, you see on the corner there, columns and the trellis, kind of reminds, you know, waiting for the train.
I see. Oh, okay.
Of a lot of different ideas, but we felt it really a lot stronger, a lot more exciting and welcoming than the previous.
The previous. Yeah, thank you for that explanation. I was wondering about that, the feature. I think it's, it looks like wood, like a darker wood, and I guess that's for, like, a train depot kind of look, right? Um, okay, well, and you know, if you haven't already, can you have these renderings emailed to us, Ron? If you've emailed them to us, then I apologize. But if, if you haven't, can you go ahead and do that? And I was noticing, for the family of four, at one-hundred percent is, what is it, one-hundred and nineteen thousand, and the rent would be about thirty-four thou, thirty-four hundred per month? Is that about right?
That's, that's just for the one-hundred percent AMI, so I did that as a comparison of this is what LA County in general.
Oh.
So what we'll do is, a family of four will be making seventy-one thousand, and they'll be paying two thousand.
Okay, for a four-bedroom.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, yeah, that's, that's good. And what's the square footage of the four-bedroom?
I think about fourteen hundred, thirteen to fourteen hundred square feet.
Mm-hmm, okay. And the one-bed, or is it one to four-bedroom?
Yes, ma'am. It'd be one-bedroom to four-bedroom. The four-bedroom is the one that has two baths in it.
Okay, so four bedrooms, two baths, at about four hundred square feet, I'm sorry, fourteen hundred square feet approximately. And then the one-bedroom is what size?
One bedrooms are about five hundred, a little over five hundred square feet.
Mm-hmm. And do you expect that those would be more for seniors?
They could qualify. We have a lot of seniors that, even though it's a family development, it's, seniors do live in our properties as well. They do qualify usually at that thirty percent, because some of them are on fixed incomes. So that fixed income would be like twenty-five thousand a year. You pay about six seventy per month.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, so it will be available to families and seniors and maybe, and students?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, I would imagine that with the train being there and a direct access to Cal State LA, it would really be a great opportunity for recently emanc, what is it, emancipation? it would really be a great opportunity for recently emanc- what is it, emancipated youth? Um, if, if that is something that they could qualify for, you know, that, that option is there for them too.
Yeah, so like, like I mentioned before, we could do some strategic, strategic marketing and how we market the properties when they come online, working with Mr. Garcia and his team on how we, maybe we could have the waiting list go through the city first, and you could put it in your local news letter first without, if you just market it towards Baldwin Park, we get to, you know, to fair housing issues, but if we strategically plan that, where we, you know, we have it, that will work with the, uh, the community development department to strategically market and do the waiting list through that, that realm, then we could kind of be more strategic in how we market the project out.
Yeah, thank you for that, because, um, you know, in our, in our community, you do have different generations that want to stay in the city, but unfortunately, they're being pushed out because of the cost of living. I mean, it's not just our community, I'm sure, but um, that's something that we hear often, you know, the, the, the families that have raised their children, and now they're having their grandchildren. You know, so I definitely see this being an opportunity for them, and I would really appreciate you working with Ron Garcia to, to be strategic that way, and I, I understand that, you know, we can't limit it, but I do appreciate the strategy, so thank you.
I think we
And then as, oh, go ahead.
I said, we could, Ron could put a condition on us on that to, uh, to say we do that marketing strategies to make sure that's, you know, in our conditions of approval, no problem.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay, well, there you go, Ron. Um, the other thing is, um, the CSIP weather learning center, so I, I really like that idea a lot. Will there be computers for the tweens and teens?
Yes, we get computers that we, we loan out as, as a part of the, where they, I think becoming more virtual because of the COVID, so we got used to that, and we do have computers that they could use during, uh, when they're doing their after-school programs and stuff like that, so that is available to them. Uh, overall, yes.
Okay, great. And how many computers do you anticipate at the center?
Depending on the need of how many, uh, um, children are in our, our CSIP, that are, that sign up for the program. Um, so it's, uh, we could go as high as, as what we need to service the whole as many kids that we have in the program. Um, I'm not, we could go as high as low to whatever we need to meet the demand.
Oh, great. Well, that's good to know too. Okay. Um, yeah, that would be a, a great help, because I would imagine that these families don't have access, you know, as easy as some of us, right, to computers or the ability to purchase a computer. Um, and so that would be a wonderful, wonderful contribution, you know, from this development. Uh, I think the only other question that I had was, what is the, the flooring at the playground center?
The, uh, floor for the playground is a rubber, uh, rubber surface, um, so it is a
Okay.
place, player surface.
Uh-huh, oh, good, okay. When I saw the, the rendering that was, that didn't come out clearly, so that's good to know. All right, well, perfect. Um, yeah, if you could just circulate those renderings, you know, thank you for making those additions and modifications. Um, it, it looks good. I, I do want to take a closer look at the renderings, but it does look good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. I think we're all very excited about the project. Sorry, excuse me. Looks really good. I think it's, it's really exciting. It's really nice to see the, the quality of the building and, and the type of quality, uh, you know, working-class families are going to be able to be able to attain in our city, and it's really important for us, especially based on our demographics, so we want to see you succeed, and we want to be a great partner to you.
Oh, and one more question, I'm sorry, Mayor. Um, the parking, is there any parking?
There is one full level of parking, and we are providing in the presentation. Let's say about seventy-five stalls.
Okay, or fifty-one units, okay.
So yeah, there's a full level of parking and all the, everything in blue that you see is either our back of house utilities, electrical room, we have a mechanical room, have generous bike storage room. So there's a lot of, uh,
Oh, good. Oh, great. And that is a parking subterranean, I think I heard, or is?
Yes, it's
Is it a combination? Okay, oh, very nice. Thank you for that. Yeah, that's, that sounds great.
I think we still have Little Ramona has some parking spaces that will be, uh, having, we were, we were contemplating having that part of the development make the development larger, but I think in the last meeting, they wanted to keep Little Ramona as a public parking area for the adjacent commercial space next to us, where I think Councilmember her name is, uh, the business, I remember, it's his comment. I remember that.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're keeping that, that's going to be a public, public open area, but we're going to, we're going to do some urban greening on that area to kind of make it not just asphalt, you know, so it's just, you have some lush, uh, vegetation around there, so you could have, uh, uh, when the train does pass, or you can make it more pedestrian-friendly, uh, walking up and down the, uh, Ramona to the, uh, community center or even back to the development.
Mm-hmm, great. Sounds good. Thank you.
Very excited about the project.
Thank you for that. So if there's no more questions from staff or council, I believe we are moving on to our next item.
Mayor, if I may ask just one question. Stephen, you mentioned the first floor being, um, for commercial, but it's really for common uses of, like, the learning center and what have you. It's not a mixed-use by any means, right, or, or is it? Might there be retail on the first floor?
No, well, the code calls, it could be mixed-use, so it's a mixed-use fill and development, but it's not in terms of mixed-use having commercial or using that as our residential leasing office space to give the fill of a mixed-use development, and I think the code calls for that specific zoning to be some type of mixed-use, so that's where we put our activated.
So it would still be called, it's still designated as a mixed-use?
Correct, yeah. So, and then in addition to that, and, uh, is activating um, and providing that additional transparency on the first floor. But you notice that community room, uh, it provides that transparency, anyone sitting in that area utilizing that area will be able to see, uh, the train come by, traffic, pedestrian, um, so it really fulfills that, that, uh, that activation on the first floor.
It leads into all the rest, that's like the gateway to the, the rest of the, the city in terms of the downtown area, so we wanted to put that as we activate it, so we could do, like I mentioned around before, there's other developments that you could do, I know last meeting you had during the, uh, the home presentation of how to use that commercial space and how to activate that. And there's some other housing developments that you have in the city that I, that's wrong, that I would help them with, uh, kind of explore where you have force developers like us to kind of, hey, put in commercial space for the habitat for humanity or something like that of that nature, that where you say, okay, we'll prove it, but hey, I want something too, so we've been working that on, on the side of, of doing that, but that's how we're able to activate it to make it look like that commercial feel. Because a lot of times, commercial, brick and mortar is hard to, to, to get not being successful currently because of the present conditions, so we did that to activate it as it kind of leads into the city and it opens up for other developments, future developments along the boulevard there to make that, to make that happen.
I just have one quick question. Do we have an ETA on when we will probably start building?
So if all the funding comes in line, um, like LA County funding comes out about two thousand twenty-five, the first quarter two thousand twenty-five is what we're projecting. We're going to use this year, or the rainy year this year and, uh, next year to apply for funding. Uh, we're going to apply for county funding, um, state ASIC funding, which is affordable housing, sustainable communities, which is really transit-oriented, reducing greenhouse gas emissions. That's next year. Um, and then we have the, the state funding programs will come out either late next year, early following year. We're going to wait for that timing. So it's really timing focused, but the latest probably be the twenty-five, first quarter twenty-five or, uh, third, fourth quarter twenty-four is kind of what we're looking at, but worst case, two thousand, two thousand twenty-five.
Good, thank you.
Great. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Mayor, if I, uh, if I may, I just wanted to, um, make, uh, mention, uh, that, um, in the near future we'll become, staff will be coming back. This project will require a street, uh, no, an alley vacation uh, that'll be, uh, come to the council for review and approval, uh, which is directly behind, uh, this project. So that'll be coming up. And then lastly, I just, uh, since, uh, we're in the midst of, um, of, uh, receiving approval from the state for our housing element. Uh, this project, along with the Retirement Housing Foundation, will help meet our, uh, regional housing needs assessment required as part of those two thousand units, so this will help meet, um, our very low and low. So we're really happy about that, and we identified this project, uh, in our housing element in, in meeting that requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, I'd like to thank Ron and his staff and councils, uh, and the mayor and vice-mayors board in, in, uh, kind of guiding us through the process to make sure we build something that's suitable for the community at large, so thank you again.
Great, thank you. So at this moment, we will move on to recess the closed session.